All the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all. Okay. A few announcements. Grafton's Memorial Day Parade will begin at noon on Monday, May 29th. The parade route will start at Norcross Park and end at the Common where the ceremony will take place. Visit grafton-ma.gov for more information. The Accessibility Advisory Committee, Affordable Housing Trust, Agricultural Commission, Board of Assessors, Board of Sewer Commissioners, Cable TV Oversight Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Conservation Commission, Cultural Council, Finance Committee, Historical Commission, Planning Board Associate Member, Public Works Advisory Committee, Recreation Committee, uh, sorry Recreation Commission, Traffic Safety Committee, Trustees of Soldiers and Sailors Memorials, Veterans Advisory Committee, and ZBA all have membership terms due to expire on June 30th, 2023. So that's coming up pretty soon. If you would like to serve on any of these boards or committees, please email your letter, letter of interest to taoffice@grafton-ma.gov. That's taoffice@grafton-ma.gov. The deadline is Thursday, June 1st. Silver Lake Beach opens Saturday, June 17th. Purchase your beach pass now at graftonrec.com or stop by the recreation office here at the municipal center. And does anybody else have any other announcements? Our first order of business is to welcome Mr. Mark Alamo. Welcome.
Thank you.
You have fans in the back over there.
I guess so.
Trust me, those will go away quick.
Yeah, I know. One night, one night only. Thank you.
I look forward to working with you.
Same here.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a great year. I would be remiss if we didn't recognize Colleen Roy.
Yes.
So I don't, I'll just open it up if anybody wants to say a couple of words.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I served on, uh, from 1989 to 1996 on the Board of Selectmen and I served with a, with a person Sheila I'd who was a great, great board member. A very, very hard worker. And I don't, I'm not gonna say anything bad about Sheila because I'd need to do that to her face, but she's not. But I just have to say that Colleen was, is probably one of the hardest workers since, since Sheila, uh, to work on this board. Um, her dedication, her drive, her spirit is, is, uh, is going to be missed. And I just wanted to, to say that. I know she's watching because she watches every single meeting that has ever been on.
Hi, Colleen.
And, and I just want to say thank you.
Anybody else?
I couldn't have, um, I couldn't have said that any better. So I will, um, thank Ray for his words. Also thank Colleen, um, instrumental in, in helping me learn over the last year. And, uh, looking forward to what the next year has sold for us to.
Absolutely. And I'm sure Colleen will see you down the road. Uh, yeah, I haven't met anybody I think that's as into municipal government as Colleen is. So, um, she'll definitely be missed. All right. So we are on to reorganizing.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mead.
I move to nominate Matt Offden as chairman.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mead.
I move to appoint Andy Jefferson as vice chair.
I'll second that. Do I have any discussion? It's gonna take me just a minute to get this rhythm down.
No, Matt.
All of us, all those in favor, I will, I will.
Keep stirring the pot, you gotta get going.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mead.
I move to appoint Mark Alamo as the clerk of this Board of Selectmen. Yes. Don't have a choice.
I'll second that.
Yep, thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
Discussion. Yeah, I, I, I reject that. I think it's too soon, actually.
Well, you, no, no, Mark. Let me give you a little history.
Okay.
The new guy's always the clerk. Always.
Yes.
Can you fix your microphone?
Oh, sorry.
The new guy's always the clerk. The clerk does nothing other than read. Okay, Andy did something, we're not sure what he did.
Well, that hurts.
But, um, but all you do is, is read the motions and then you sign off on the, on the, um. So maybe the town might be interested in hearing from someone else. Maybe they'd be interested in hearing from Anne Marie instead of me. I appreciate the hazing and I'll take it if you want me to do it. But would the board consider someone else?
Would not have made the motion if I didn't want you to do it.
Would the other board consider someone else?
Um, I don't consider it hazing at all.
No, no. Nope, not at all.
Oh, hang on, there's more stuff coming up.
That's right.
Is that something that you're interested in?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm open to. Either.
I'll rescind my motion.
All right, then I will need another motion.
I nominate Anne Marie Foley as the select board clerk.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we have reorganized, look at that.
Do you continue tonight?
What's that?
I think you take over. I can, it's fine, either way.
Generally speaking, yes, it's instantaneous, but the previous clerk is prepared for the meeting so they finish out.
We can do that.
New person does it after.
Thanks.
All right, uh, next up we have public hearings. So we have a poll petition by National Grid and we have somebody here with National Grid, Connor Reynolds, uh, let's see, is he on?
Is he even attending? Nope, there he is.
I had to dial.
Okay, great. Um, well, come on in, welcome. Um, and maybe you could just walk us through your project.
Um, so this is just, um, we have to remove an anchor, uh, for a.
You're right, we have a public notice to read, don't we?
Yep.
You gotta open the hearing. All right.
The select board will hold a public hearing on the request of National Grid and Verizon New England Inc. For permission to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Milbury Street, Grafton, uh, Grafton, National Grid. To install one JO pole on Milbury Street, beginning at a point approximately 80 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Fitzpatrick Road. Install one new stub pole, 35 foot CL3, P, uh, pound, sorry, uh, 74 dash 84. Install one sidewalk strut anchor and guy. Install pole to pole guy wire from P74 to P84 to P74. The public hearing will be held on May 23, 2023 in Conference Room A of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center located at 30 Providence Road and via Zoom, starting at 7:00 PM. The Zoom link will be posted in the May 23, 2023 Select Board Agenda. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment. Anyone wishing to do so may attend in person or via Zoom. Posted to the Town Bulletin Board and in the Grafton News, May 4, 2023 and May 11, 2023. I move the board open the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so now we have Mr. Reynolds. Come on in and start again.
So, uh, this is just for, uh, we have to remove an anchor at pole 74 to make way for a sidewalk, I believe, is going in. Um, and to do this, we have to put a pole on the opposite side of the street to support, uh, the wire going down Fitzpatrick Road. Um, and that is basically the, the, the quick synopsis of this project.
All right. Anything from the board? No questions?
Nope.
Uh, any input from the public, either in person or online?
No hands on Zoom.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
I move the.
Sorry, no, 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 I'm ahead of myself, go ahead, sorry.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the poll petition for Milbury Street as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, you skipped over update representation on boards and committees.
Oh, I did, all right, we can go back to that then. Um, all right, so, um, we have a discussion on representation on boards and committees. Um, let's see.
So the, one thing, Matt, sorry, if I could just jump in. The Sustainability Commission is no longer, right?
Right.
We can take that off. And what about the Shared Services Committee? Is that inactive as well?
Correct.
Yeah.
So how do we officially wind those down?
Take that one off.
What's that?
How do we officially wind those down?
I think you've done some of that already. This is just our internal worksheet that we use. We can, we can clean it up, but I wouldn't put a lot of stock. Anyplace where there's dashes means we don't need a person.
Okay, got it.
The PPW Building Committee held a last meeting last Thursday.
Correct.
That's good news. All right, so, uh, we're gonna need somebody for CIPC?
Contingent upon that, uh, I was wondering if you were looking to continue with Affordable Housing Trust?
Tough one.
Because if you're not, I'd like to go to that. If you are, I would like to consider, be considered for CPC. CIPC, excuse me.
I would like to stick with affordable housing. Yeah, right now. So you're interested in CIPC?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let's see, we also have TRICOM.
And that, how often does that meet? Or where do I find? I'll try to look up information on that.
Quarterly, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
So I think we've met twice in total. So that's, yeah, finance schools and select board and that's to keep budget and priorities aligned. I think that becomes more important as we, uh, face a potential override situation. So that we can, you know, that'll, that'll, instead of meeting with all of the massive, you know, 14-person contingent or whatever, um, that'll be the, the proxy group for that.
And is there someone now that was doing that or?
I actually think we have multiple people on that, isn't it?
Oh, sorry, over here it says Colleen.
Yeah, all right. Or I believe it's supposed to be.
I'd be interested in that.
I might be interested if you needed help.
And if someone else was dying, you know, if you wanted, I couldn't go either way.
So I'd like to stay on it and why don't you guys just talk about who you?
Mark, you go on, that's great.
Okay.
All right. So Mark it is. Is there anybody looking to move on or off anything else?
I'd like to go on economic development if that's possible, but that's.
So you're gonna have to.
Fibrations out of that.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Can't bite on that? Want to arm wrestle for it? Sure, I'll kick you, never mind. No, no, I'm, I'm staying on the, I gotta stay on that.
That was one I was interested in too. So my two ARPA, which I don't think is on here, but maybe I'm looking, it might be on the other list.
No, it's the third from the bottom.
Yeah, so I, oh, you're right, yes, yes, yes. That's, will be winding down and we're certainly meeting a lot less and will be over the next, you know, six or eight months. Additionally, open space and recreation, just so you all know, is, is, you know, coming near the end of the charge and meeting less and will only be meeting less, so. Just FYI.
Okay.
In terms of equalling loads and whatnot.
All right, um, any other changes then that we want to make? If not, um, I think we can take a couple of motions. We do that, right?
Just say, uh, update the board and committee assignments as discussed.
Yeah, we don't, we really don't need a motion for this. We can if you want, Matt, but that's.
Uh, I don't need a motion. The board doesn't, so that's fine. So we'll have Andy on CIPC, we'll have Anne Marie on TRICOM. What else did we talk about?
No, no, it's you and, you and Mark on TRICOM.
Sorry, Mark on TRICOM. All right. Uh, then we're good. All right, moving on.
Another public hearing.
We have an inholder public hearing for 25 Grafton Common. Did you guys want to come up and, for a second? And do we have a notice for this one?
Yep.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that an application has been made by 25 Grafton LLC Laurel Hughes He, DBA The Grafton Inn, 41 Angela Ave, Shrewsbury, MA for the transfer of the inholder all alcohol license held by James J. Hunter Jr., DBA The Grafton Inn. Premise to be licensed is located at 25 Grafton Common, Grafton, MA. The establishment is 12,000 square feet, freestanding building consisting of three floors. The first floor has a full-service restaurant and bar area with a seating capacity of 120. Second floor consists of a function room with a seating capacity of 150 with a third floor consisting of nine rooms. Premises also include an outdoor patio adjacent to the building with seating capacity of 50. Remote meeting participation may be available and the meeting link will be posted on the May 23, 2023 Agenda. Upon this application, the select board will be holding a public hearing in Conference Room A, Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, 30 Providence Road, Grafton, MA, 01519 on Tuesday, May 23, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Published May 11th, 2023 in the Grafton News and on the Town Bulletin Board. And I move the board vote to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, uh, so we have Laurel here, I believe. Yep, um, so maybe you can, um, yeah, just walk us through quickly what's happening and, um, if the board has any questions, then we can go through that.
Okay.
Yeah, just a quick, quick overview.
Um, um, good evening, everybody. My name's Laurel, so I just like purchased like a Grafton Inn. We want to change all the liquor licenses under my name. And then I hope I try my best to make restaurants very clean, very nicely and then have a good serve, good food for, serve everybody.
Love it. Um, do you have any questions from the board?
I do, man. What kind of restaurant is it gonna be?
We would keep like a, keep a regular habit right now, uh, American food, but it adds some healthy food for sushi, like a sushi and American food mixed together.
So you, you guys, you guys own Baba Sushi?
Uh, my partner owns it, yes.
So you had the location in Sturbridge, one in Worcester?
Uh, yeah, we have in Worcester and Sturbridge and Bolton, Bolton we have one. And we have one in New Island. Yeah.
Okay. I've been to two of them.
Oh, hey.
Very good sushi.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah.
Well, welcome to Grafton, we're excited to have you, for sure.
Yeah, we really appreciate everybody helped, yeah.
Um, do we have any commentary, uh, or questions from the audience or online?
You have no hands on Zoom.
I was just curious unrelated to this, the license transfer. Um, do you have plans for upstairs for the function room or the rooms at all? Or you think you'll just focus on down?
You mean the function room?
Yeah.
We will keep the same, but we will do a little monitoring it, it will nicely.
Okay.
And then, uh, those are the same thing, we all, we will update and.
Okay, great.
New look, yes.
Great.
All right.
Thanks.
Do you, yeah, also unrelated to the license, but, um, do you have, uh, an anticipated opening date for the restaurant?
Uh, depends like, uh, how could the license, it have it? So far we have, I have more than 10, uh, party, the waiting, me to get the license, see how I all hold it on hand. As soon as, after July, the end of July, or middle of July, it will be, I can have the license.
Oh, great.
Take a motion.
I move the board vote to close the public hearing.
So move, I mean, second, sorry.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
You didn't get it yet.
Well, hang on a second.
Whoa, hang on.
I need one more motion.
One more, sorry. I move the board vote to approve the transfer of the inholder all alcohol license by James Hunter, DBA The Grafton Inn to Laurel Juie. She, DBA The Grafton Inn and sign the licensing authority certi- certification.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now you got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And thanks Jay Hunter for, um.
Yeah, all the years, he.
All the years at the end, yeah.
Good luck, Charlie.
Good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, um, next up is a discussion and an appointment of the master plan working group. Is there anybody that would like to express their interest?
I think you have one select board member that expressed interest and then the rest are listed.
Let me just get there.
Yeah.
Page 50 of the packet.
Mm-hmm. 51, yeah.
We have it says online.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, there it goes.
So does anybody want to discuss the list? Anne Marie, I think you were interested in being the select board rep. I was also interested, but.
And it's not really, I don't think it's a select board rep, I think it's just an open group. I just expressed interest to Fiona on being a part of it. I don't believe we have a rep per se, as far as I know.
I think anytime a select board member sits on a board or committee, you're the rep.
But I mean, so there's other committees such as ARPA and Waste Management where there is a select board representative. Yeah, and in this instance, I don't believe there is that.
No, because it's not your, your charge.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Um, so, uh, I'm fine with you doing it, I guess, um, if you can, I guess, act in that capacity of coming back to the board with, uh, important things. I do want to contribute to that.
Yeah.
But I don't have to be at all the meetings, so, um, either from a, like, uh, member updates or just if you want to reach out to me individually for things that require participation. It's just, um, I'm gonna make a little bit of a plug for the master plan. It's, you know, it's our guiding document, um, that, uh, the last one that, that we did was from 2001 and it is the, the document that, uh, all of the departments, uh, boards and committees in town really should look at, um, to help guide decisions, um, to make sure that they're alignment in, uh, you know, it, with our master plan. Uh, so it's really important, um, and it's one of those things that, uh, you know, public input into the master plan is the most important thing because ultimately, um, the master plan should align with what people want for the future of the town. So, um, please, 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 uh, there's, uh, been a, um, a survey put out on Facebook so that, please go and look for that, um, and then, uh, there'll be, I think, more, many more opportunities uh, for public input to the process, so, um, yeah, just stay tuned and, uh, pay some attention to that.
Just on that note, Matt, that's why I reached out to Fiona. I had expressed interest to her previously, but I didn't see anywhere on the website a date to, you know, to where you had to get your, um, express interest, you know, to the planning board. And so that's why I was late in doing so. And she did indicate today that we may be able to open that up to folks who also didn't know that there was a, a cutoff date per se. I mean, last time on the master plan, there was 38 people that were on this, the committee, so it was pretty, not that 38, you know, may or may not be good, but certainly, um, the more people involved, certainly the better to create the document that will potentially, you know, shape our future.
Absolutely. So Fiona, did you have a new date?
Um, I, so I, after speaking with the, um. Later, but all of these meetings will be open to the public and we highly encourage members of the public, um, residents as well as folks who, um, are volunteers on boards and commissions to, to join the new date. Um, I don't have a new hard date, right, per se, but I think that, um, you know, if you are interested, if folks in town are interested in, in participating, let me know, um, as soon as you can. You can, um, email the planning department, um, or me directly. You can also call us, um, and we'll also do, um, well, I guess, it's probably a good, uh, time to do a final call for volunteers on our, uh, social media platforms as well to me, to get that, that word out and people be aware of, maybe we can have, um, you know, I'm, I'm happy to do whatever the board thinks, whatever the board sees fit. If we need to do it, uh, you know, keep it open for another week to get final names and happy to do that.
So, uh, my opinion is it's your working group, um, and you should manage it how you want to manage it. But, uh, just looking at the, the list, um, we do have, uh, some of the usual suspects. And it would be great if we could have, um, you know, more resident, uh, participation. So I don't know what that looks like, but yeah, another week or so, just, we're announcing it on our meeting. So please do get in touch with the planning department, uh, on the phone or over email, um, if you're interested in doing that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah. All right, it's time for some motions then.
I move the board vote to appoint Colleen Roy, Linda Hassinger, Bruce Spiny, David Robbins, John Allen, Anne Marie Foley, Shiva Gati, Guru Anad, Hemant, Pasala and Roshan Utangi to the master plan working group.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next up, we have appointments from the town administrator and first up is the Aleki Musamba, the Board of Assessors.
Yep, so I, uh, met with Aleki and, um, and, um, the town ancestor, Candy, and, oh no, geez.
Almost.
Yeah, I got it. Jamie Kalanowski. And, um, we met with a few different candidates and, uh, really liked, uh, Aleki's approach. Local, uh, business person in, in town quite a bit, um, has the ability to make the, the meetings and, um, has the desire to serve Grafton, so that's who we selected.
Sounds good. Um, any discussion? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Aleki Musamba to the Board of Assessors.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, and now we have, um, a new officer. Come on up. Try not to butcher this, Officer Corinian.
Corinian, that's right.
All right, did it. Um, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, maybe you could just, uh, go through a little bit of where you've been at and?
Of course. Like I said, uh, to, during my interview, the older you get, these answers always get a little long-winded. Um, so bear with me. Um, thirty-five years old. Huh?
For a little while.
Thirty-five years old, I grew up in Milbury, um, I have, I graduated from Saint John's, I have a bachelor's degree from Worcester State in sociology. An associate's degree in CJ from Massasoit Community College, I've been a mental health counselor for, or I was a mental health counselor for about six years at UMass Medical School. Um, I have experience working at Boston Medical Center as a public safety officer, I was a sworn officer there, I've worked at Becker College, UMass Memorial. And WPI, all as a police officer, um, I have some experience dispatching, um, and I have a four-year-old son, I've been married for eight years to my beautiful wife, Tanya. We live right up the road here in Grafton for the past four years. In short, that's, that's Officer Gurinian.
That wasn't too long at all? Chief, did you have any commentary?
What he said.
What he said, alright.
Actually, uh, he, uh, Matthew was, uh, interviewed last year, the last hires that we did, and he, uh, he's was working, he's wa- was working at Worcester Polytech. Uh, which is an accredited, uh, one of the accredited colleges out there, so they're very stiff, they have a lot of, uh, protocols, uh, which is nice, it's not a loosely based, uh, police force out there. But, uh, he indicated he wanted to come to Grafton, he wanted to be on the Grafton Police Department, and we told him there would be openings in the future, and he waited. As you all must be aware, uh, police officer openings are out there and we can't fill the positions, fortunately, Grafton, we've been very, very lucky, uh, taking, uh, officers, and he's already been trained. Uh, so he doesn't have to go to the police academy, he's got experience, uh, which is very, very fortunate, so, but he said he was gonna wait for the Grafton opening, and he did, and we took him.
Great.
Yes.
I'm very happy to, uh, not only be a member of the police department, but my wife and I want our son to grow up here. Uh, we want him to go to school here, we want to have our life here, so we're very happy to be, uh, in even more vital member of the community.
Excellent. Love it.
Thank you.
Good for you, good for Grafton.
Thank you.
You have any committees that you could go?
We got a, we got a couple left.
He said it, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Alright, and thank you for allowing us to, uh, introduce our newest officer, uh, it's a great, uh, thing we're doing here, just to let the public meet our police officers out there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll see you out on the road.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice to meet everybody.
Thanks for coming in.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, chief.
Alright, we have a proclamation.
Nope.
We don't. Moving, just, okay, um, let's see.
He's playing golf.
Okay.
He's not even here.
I see, alright, well, we're updating the fire detail rates for fiscal year twenty-four. Chief, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, sent correspondence, um, looking to, um, upgrade our detail for public service details, if, um. Somebody calls for a fire watch or a hot works detail, which is when the fire department has to go and monitor, um, people welding or torch cutting in occupied buildings. Um, our current rate is forty-one dollars and forty-three cents per hour, and I'd like to, um, see if the board would allow us to upgrade that to fifty-five dollars an hour. Um, that would put us on par with the police department's detail rate, and I think it'll help, um, you know, get a little more interest in, um, members filling those details when they're available. And also help if we can advertise that on our recruitment also, that, that's a potential for income for people.
Any questions or discussion?
I don't have a problem, I just have, uh, just one thing, this, we're just affirming this, correct?
Uh, when you read, go ahead, chief.
I was just gonna say, under the, uh, strong chief, uh, statue, it's up to the me to ask, but you guys to affirm, um, or not affirm, but, uh, make the decision on.
Yeah.
Um, pay.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Alright.
Yeah, you're, you're setting the rate effectively.
Right, uh, alright, any other discussion? Um, alright, then great, um, I'll take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve the increase of the private fire rate, the fi- private fire detail rate to fifty-five dollars per hour effective June one, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I make a suggestion, chief?
Sure.
I'm gonna step right over my authority. Uh, the board may want to consider pegging the fire department detail rate to all future increases of the police department detail rate.
I'll keep them in line.
Every three years, the police department negotiates a new contract, and every three years, that amount goes up, so rather than wait for that disparity, which was a pretty significant difference between the two.
Yeah.
Um, you can vote to just peg those two together, and then the fire department will always be equal to the police department as far as detail rates go.
Okay.
Can we do that tonight?
Chief.
If, if that's what the chief would like?
Assuming you're okay with that?
Great.
Okay.
Yeah.
There you go.
I think that makes the most sense.
So I move that, um, we associate the.
You, you could move that the select board, um. Oh, yeah, you got me stuck there too for a second, uh, that the select board vote to, um. Set the fire department detail rate to equal, equal to the police department detail rate. From here forward.
So I vote that, or sorry, I move that the select board vote to set the fire department detail rate to, um, mirror or equal the police department detail rate.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Um, Matt, one other thing that, that while the chief is here, you, you are now the liaison to the fire department.
Okay. Aye. What time do you want phone calls in the morning? I'll give you, I'll give you my number.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Yeah, alright. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we have a common victoriler license at, uh, uncommon cow, do we have, looks like we have Steve online?
Yeah, how is everybody?
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, um, do you want to just, um, give us the highlights?
Sure, yeah, so, um, we, we rented the space, uh, at one Grafton Common, uh, used to be quite fetching. Um, and we're gonna be serving ice cream, we're using, uh, Bliss Dairy out of Attleboro. Uh, they've got a premium ice cream that we're gonna be using, we've got twelve, about twelve to fifteen flavors, and then we've got, uh, Armeno Coffee out of Northborough, they're a roaster. We're gonna use their dark roast, uh, their house blend and a decaf, and then we've got an espresso machine, so we can do our lattes and iced lattes and macianos and caramel macianos and flavored syrups. Um, so hopefully, uh, we'll be busy, so we're looking to get our license, our common vicular license from you guys. Um, I've already met with Board of Health and they signed off, so I'm just, this is my last license that I have to apply for.
Got it, okay. Sounds like you guys could probably do an affogato as well.
I'm having one as we speak.
Alright, it's on, any questions?
I, I just want to say that, you know, Steve is a, a, a great businessman, runs, runs Grafton Grill and the, and the ice cream truck that goes around. And he decided to do this because he had ten minutes left in his day, and he needed to fill that ten minutes.
True.
Yeah, you're right, Ray. Ray, don't worry, you'll be showing up on Friday at four o'clock, right?
I'm sure he will.
No, you gotta work.
Oh, oh.
Do you?
Then no.
No, I'm just kidding, I'd love to have you all as customers, that's all I need.
Sounds easy.
Uh, do you have an opening date?
Yep, we're opening Friday at ten AM.
This Friday, ten AM, okay, fantastic.
As long as I get the license tonight.
Alright, let's get it done then, uh, any other commentary?
I'll just say the place looks great.
Yeah, I can't wait to see it.
Yeah.
Um, great, well, uh, thanks for continuing to, uh, expand your business, uh, in Grafton, we appreciate it, um, with that, I will take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve the common victory license for uncommon cow at one Grafton Common.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, next up, we have, uh. What do we have? Do, 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 oh, the farmer's market. And we have Liz here, come on up.
Snuck down, it'll be really, really quick.
Miss Spiny, alright.
School committee meeting upstairs.
Thanks for inviting your time.
Yeah.
We won't keep you long.
Thank you for having me tonight, so, I'm Elizabeth Spiny, I am, in addition to being on the school committee, and I found another ten minutes in my day, so I'm now the chair of the Grafton Farmers Market. And this year, we are reopening the farmer's market on June fourteenth, we're bringing it back to the common.
Yes.
We have your permission tonight, we're going to have live music, every week, we have at least one, sometimes two food trucks that are coming, we're working, they're getting permits and all that stuff, but that's another, that's another organization. Um, and, uh, we've got some great vendors coming this week, we've reorganized as a committee, we're having children's programs, we're having cornhole, um, it's gonna be fun, it's gonna be exciting. Um, might even see a bounce house there every once in a while, so we're really excited to bring it back, it's in just a few weeks now, I can't believe we're almost there, and, um, so we have bands that are. Um, with your permission, will be playing this summer, we have Long Lost String Band, who's going to be opening for us, um, all of these are, um, small, either, um, singles or duos. Um, singers and guitar players mostly, who will play for about two hours between, um, in the market hours, which are two to six PM on Wednesdays during the summer. So it starts June fourteenth, and we go through October fourth, um, and we have Long Long String Band, like I said, opening, we also have acoustic duo, Hit the Bus Band, Bob Jordan. Um, Violin Cat, who's from, uh, who's a teacher at Apple Tree Arts, um, Gabe Kane, who's also, who's a guitar teacher at Apple Tree Arts. Um, Luanne Crosby and Willing T and Doctor X are all, um, planning to hopefully be able to perform this summer at different times, so some of them, you'll see multiple times during the summer, fall goes well, so. Uh, we, that's what I'm looking for tonight, is the, the permit to be able to play that live music.
This would be awesome.
Fantastic, any questions?
Nope.
Alright, I'll take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve an annual outdoor music license for the dates presented for the Grafton Farmers Market on the common.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much for coming up.
Thank you very much.
Alright, June fourteenth, farmer's market starts. Um, alright, next, we have the VFW post fourteen ninety-seven.
Uh, this is a standard thing that the VFW does, and we did not require them to come in.
Okay, then I'll take a motion.
Move the board vote to approve a one-day beer and wine license for VFW post one four nine seven on May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, alright. Um, let's see, we have, uh, the Tufts, or, yeah, um. School of Veterinary Medicine, all-day alcohol license.
Yep, so you have Jessica on Zoom.
Hello, Jessica.
Hello, hi, Jessica Scott, representing Tufts, um, we have three one-day all-alcohol, uh, license applications in for June. Uh, Saturday, June third, Saturday, June twenty-fourth, and Thursday, June twenty-ninth, all events are happening on campus with the police detail and, uh, served by tip-certified servers.
Okay. Any questions from the board? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve the one-day all-alcohol licenses for coming School of Veterinary Medicine at Tufts University on June three, June twenty-four, and June twenty-nine of twenty twenty-three.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much, Ms. Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, have a good night.
Uh, next, we have a request to take Waterville Circle as a public way.
Yeah, so you have, uh, Tim Trainer, who is on Zoom, uh, but I'll maybe lead off there, Tim, if you don't mind. Uh, so Tim and I and Fiona had met, um, Tim was interested in getting, uh, Waterville, uh, circle taken as a public way, it appears to be a. A, a street that was developed over time as houses were built, there, there really doesn't seem to be any ownership that I can find. Um, it's not tied to any of the parcels, I went through all the deeds, um, that said, Article nineteen of our general bylaws does say that if, um. The residents of the road petition the select board, the select board shall order the DPW director to create a layout. Um, and so that is what, uh, Tim's request, uh, to the board is, for you to order the DPW director to create said layout, and then we go from there.
Okay. So this sets a baseline for us to accept the road?
Yep, so we can't, we as a municipality can't accept the road, town meeting can't accept the road, until there has been a, a layout established with meets and bounds.
Yeah.
Um, otherwise, what are you, what are you taking?
Right.
Um, so that's step one, and so step one is to actually get the surveyor out there and do that work.
Okay.
Re- regardless of whether town meeting votes to take it later or not, this is the process of our, of our bylaw.
Sure, okay.
And does, so the surveyor's in-house or no, we, we?
Nope.
Contracted out?
No, we contract out, um, we're doing the same thing, it's the same process we're using for junkers tariffs. Tim, did I miss anything there?
No, no, I think you nailed it, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
So has anybody assessed the condition of that, of that?
Yeah, it's pretty checkered.
I did today.
Yeah, it's podo, it's all.
Yep.
It's not, there's no pavement.
It would, it would need to be, uh, should town meeting vote to take it, it would need to be brought up to standards.
And it's narrow, like, right?
And there's no cul-de-sac, so it just sort of goes right into people's driveways at the end.
Yeah.
You'll probably have to make some sort of accommodation for that.
And that's, that's where the layout's gonna come into play, because where, whether or not the ends of those folks' driveways fall in the layout or not, is gonna be a whole, it's, it's. You really, if going down the street right now, it's width and where driveways intersect with it, um, there will be some historical consideration there, but you don't even know that that taking would wind up being. The width that you see now, right, you probably have to go to a minimum of twenty-two feet, um, so. That's what the layout is for, so we, we do that, and then they'll take it, but it's definitely, uh, you know, not in great shape.
So right across the street is Birch Street, which is the same situation, so. I, I mean, not that, not that I don't want to improve roads in town, but I want to do it very carefully, this has been, this road has been like this for sixty years.
So I, I would love to, to speak on that for really quickly, I actually used to live, um, I rented fifty-eight Waterville Street previously before moving on this road, so I actually lived. Right next to Birch Street, um, I will say that Birch Street is, there's only one house or one family that lives at the end of it. Um, this street has seven families that live on it, um. Myself and two others are brand new, um, and we are all either having babies or have had a baby, there is one very elderly man on the road. Um, and there are two, um, retired folks on the road, so in terms of, of safety, I mean, last year. We had a week of heavy rain and we actually had UPS trucks get stuck in the middle of our street. Um, we also are, in terms of, you know, upkeep, I, I, I've personally, the part, one of the, the largest reasons that I. Um, you know, brought this to, to the board's attention was I actually had to do repairs to my vehicle because of the road. Um, so it's just becoming one of those things where it's, it's, it's sort of treacherous to a point.
How do they clear the snow now? Do they just do it together?
Yeah, yeah, the, the town does clear, um, I have a, an SUV, my husband has a sedan, um, he is not able to leave our road or come in if it hasn't been plowed. Um, so that is also a, a concern, especially if we're, we're adopting this year and we're about to have an infant in the home. Um, the road does get plowed, um, it's very gravelly, as, as some of you might be aware, but, um, at the end of the winter season. The end of the road is just a huge, sort of like, small mountain of dirt, um, because everything just gets pushed down, it's usually just one pass.
So our bylaws require us to, um.
Your, your bylaws say shall, so.
Okay.
Um, you can debate the merits of taking public, uh, private ways as public, uh, at town meeting or beforehand. uh, at town meeting or beforehand. The arti- the, the article that you do have in your bylaws, this is, this is the way.
Yeah, okay. Well, that makes it pretty straightforward then.
Right.
Yep.
So I will take a motion.
Do we have to order Mr. Canore? We can't just ask him?
It says order in the bylaws.
All right.
Otherwise, you know how he is.
I do. That's why I want it to be nice. So doing it by the book, I move the board vote to order the Department of Public Works Director to create a layout plan for Waterville Circle.
Wait, wait till I tell him how rude Andy was about it.
All right, texting him. A motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mr. Trainer. Um, so next up we have the school department maintains building. I thought Jay was gonna come.
I have texted him with my estimate of when we would be ready.
All right.
My estimate is not correct.
Sean came in instead.
Sean came, I accidentally texted Sean. Uh, Jay is on his way at some point, so maybe just move through the plan.
Yeah, fine. Uh, let's talk about one Grafton Common then. Um, did you wanna kick that off, Evan?
Okay. Um, so if the board recalls, we started having this conversation, um, geez, I would say close to a year ago. Um, that the one Grafton Common needs, Jay's here.
All right.
Do you wanna stop and go back?
Let's stop.
Okay.
Since uh, we've got, we've got a celebrity in our presence. Come on up.
Cool.
Mr. Cummings.
Welcome.
Hey, everybody.
Glad to get out up there, huh?
Um, good evening. Uh, thanks for having me. I was um, here tonight to put something on your radar if it's not already and um, ideally looking for eventually some, some direction on it. And uh, that goes back to the topic being, uh, I think it's three Worcester Street, the old um, Grafton Center Fire Station. I'm not sure exactly when it stopped operating as a fire station, but I do know that in twenty-ten, that unused space was given, if you will, um, to the school department, ma- the, the maintenance department within the Grafton Public Schools. Um, initially they shared that space, I believe with an ambulance company that for whatever reason just kind of faded out. So for the last eight years, I think it's just been, been us up there. We have a small maintenance team. We've got three trucks, uh, trailers, all of our snow removal equipment, all that stuff is up there. Um, the, the biggest issue has been since day, well, I've been here for twelve years, so at least for the twelve years, it's been this tenuous um, very undefined ownership of that building, basically, like a, a renter is what it feels like. In every year, every two years, the topic of knocking it down and making it parking for the common comes up, obviously. Parking up there is in high demand, I get that. Um, but that has led to over the last twelve years on the school side and the town side, if you will, we haven't put any capital monies into that building. Done the bare minimum, but we're not gonna, you know, collectively, we don't have a ton of money for capital projects, so we're not apt to invest in a property that might get demolished. Um, but it's been twelve years of this. Um, so I'm hoping that the board will at least consider what the direction is of that space. Once we have direction, if it's not gonna be demolished, I'm very confident that Evan and I can work to get a plan together to get that, that building where it really should be. I've been up there numerous times. I went up there today. Overall, for an old building, um, it's in pretty good shape. Uh, no active leaks. I mean, it's, it's old, don't get me wrong, but it, but it, it works for us. Um, a few guys, the heat works. The, the only real investment over the last twelve years, about fifteen months ago, we put in a new furnace. The, the old one just died and we had to have just basic heat. Um, but it's got the, obviously working electricity, plumbing, like, i- it works for us. Um, and, but I'd love to paint it, have it repointed, uh, get three garage doors up there. Uh, two look to be maybe original. Um, but like all matching would be good. Just make it look look and, and feel like a, a, a building that we're actually you know, really invested in and caring about, but I don't want to do that if, if we don't have long-term planning, you know, for that building. Is the chimney? I'm a little all over the place, but is there anything I'm missing?
No.
Mr. Cummings.
No, I just wanted to say that, that uh, Jay, the tearing down of that building has never come before this board.
Okay.
Ever. Now, people may be, may talk about it and, and everything like that, but that's great. It doesn't come before us.
Yeah, I think years ago, I'm, I'm sorry.
Probably.
There, there was something in the school committee brought up that they wrote a letter. I, I kind of blocked it out of my mind.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, you know, it works, it, it works perfectly for what you, for what you're using it for.
That's right.
And there is parking there because people park down the driveway and around the back and, you know, to go to the common or, or whatever. And, and, and I think it's a building that we, you know, we need to maintain and, and keep and, and have it for the school department. You don't have anything else.
Correct. If, if that goes away, we definitely need to build a building.
Nor do you have the place to put it. So, so, you know, I, I, I think that we should, you know, maintain this building um, as we maintain all of our buildings. And uh, and that we, you know, discussion of knocking it down is, like I said, it's never come before this board that I know of. So.
So when I was looking into this, uh, after Jay brought it up to me, it did, did come before the select board at, at some point. We're talking ten years-ish, nine years maybe. Um, and it was, didn't really go anywhere. It seemed to, the conversation fizzled out, but that was the conversation. The conversation is, do we knock down the building? Add parking capacity, right? Like a munis- actual municipal parking lot. Um, and then Jay had said he, he does have some space by the high school or the middle school.
Look at it, the, the one space that we could use, um, and we, we had to get some estimates whenever that was, um, was behind the high school, middle school, there's a parking lot back there, and the estimate at the time was about four hundred thousand for concrete slab, metal building with obviously heat, water, electricity.
Yep.
Uh, it's kind of bare bones. I'm guessing that price hasn't gone down.
No, I, I would think, you know, you're probably between the making it parking and building that building, you're probably at a million dollars would be my guess. By the time you improve the lot, put in curbing, make it look like not an abandoned lot, you know? Um, you're probably at a million dollars by the time you build the next Butler building and do all that stuff. You're gonna have to have ADA accessible restrooms in there now. You got, you know, radiant heat, all that stuff. Um, so when, when Jay and I had this conversation, probably a month ago, um, you know, the, the thought is to bring it to this board to get direction so that Jay and I know what, what, what comes next. So we'll either start working together to do, you know, renovation and um, you know, rehab or start looking at getting together the pieces to move that site somewhere else.
I assume it's too early that we don't have any estimates on like the type of work that we'd like to have done in terms of painting, repointing, et cetera?
That's a Jay.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Okay.
Lead abatement. Uh, it, there's not a lot on the outside. It didn't bring any photos, but it, there's some white trim that we'd have to, uh, do it right. It's not just, you know, a kid in a paint.
We're not gonna get the scope.
So I, I don't, next to that type of numbers, it, I don't think it would be too significant, but I don't have actual estimates.
Two hundred thousand go a lot, a lo- long way there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I couldn't agree more. Um, probably the ones that jumped out were the, the painting, repointing in the garage doors. If you really look, two out of the three match, barely work, and one's newer. It just, we can do better.
And Jay, you don't use the upstairs, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so the upstairs is still stuffed with junk, right?
No, it's actually empty. I went up there today. Yeah, it was cleaned out. You wouldn't want to spend a lot of time up there.
That's another, that's another option for the town to be able to use that. But don't look at me like that.
No, this is a great plan, Ray. Keep going, please.
Jay just said you wouldn't want to spend a lot of time up there.
Right now, no, you wouldn't.
No, no, you wouldn't want.
But, but you could. It crossed my mind.
You wouldn't want to spend a lot of time up there, but if it was cleaned up and it was renovated and you, the town could use that space. You still get that look on your face. I'm gonna throw something. I haven't picked, I haven't figured out which one of these things I'm gonna throw.
I'm gonna look away. I'm gonna look away.
Put the select board up there?
You have to think that.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna stop.
Okay.
So the space could be utilized for something. Maybe your office.
All right, listen, you wanna move my office over there. I'll, I'm there right now.
Well, so um,
What were you, uh, all kidding aside, Ray, you're thinking like meeting space for public use?
It could be meeting space. It could be, I mean, there's, there's a big meeting room that runs right across the front of the, the front of the building. There's bathrooms up there. There's a kitchen up there. There's, you know, um.
Then would you need an elevator?
It could be, it could be, you know, if we replaced the windows and did something with the heating system, we could use it.
Yeah.
It, it's always an option because they don't use it at all.
Correct.
So.
I think to make it like it's some sort of meeting space, you'd have to do an elevator then. I have a question about parking though. So if we were to, to keep, like, I think that there's no parking now there, right? Like, certainly, like in the evening for sure, but like, so during the day though, it's, isn't it just kind of a, there's no parking?
Correct. Yeah, um, I, I think in
Some people might.
In theory, yes, that was something that came up today when I, when I toured. They said it's always this push and pull and very unofficially, they were fine if people were kind of out of the way.
Yeah.
He said, you know, they go to Bushel and Peck or somewhere on the common and park in like the worst spot that you can't believe anybody would actually park there. And then the truck gets blocked in. He said it's a constant pain, but, okay.
Like if somehow if we were to, to go this route, that we could make a portion, I don't know how it could work.
But maybe the sides in the back or something.
The businesses that are there and certainly in the evening, obviously it's not a problem, but I know, I never, I don't park there because I think that there is a no parking sign. Even in the evening when there, I know that there's no one in there, so maybe that could change, you know, if we were to decide to keep it.
I think that's a really good point. I was thinking if, if we were to go ahead and that's kind of our space, maybe do a better job of no parking in certain areas, but do an equally good job saying there is parking available inside the back, clean up the back more. Um, I think we could do a lot with that.
Yeah, a question. Two questions. What is the address?
I thought it was three, uh,
It is Worcester Street.
Three, what's the street? I got it right.
Right across from Bushel and Peck.
Oh, I should know that.
Yeah, as you come out of.
Yeah, I, I didn't do a good job.
Really more across from Tavern, I'd say.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, really? So what you want to use it for, it's good enough?
Yeah, definitely.
As long as it's cleaned up or renovated and painted.
And I don't want to put resources into it if we're not gonna keep it. Um, so yes.
That was one.
I said two. The address was one.
All right.
And then the other, yeah. Was it going up as two?
Uh, any idea how old the roof is?
I don't. Um.
I think the roof was done in the eighties.
Yeah, I don't know. I did ask today if there was any active leaking and the answer was no.
Okay.
It's an old building.
Every roof I deal with has a leak.
Yep, absolutely. Well, I mean, it'll be cheaper than building a new one, but um, I guess I'm just wondering what kind of investment we're talking about. Um, I'd be in favor of, of keeping it, but I do think uh, I've had several business owners up in that area. Um, well, several, I had two business owners in the area um, asking about additional parking. Um, so if we could, uh, as you guys are contemplating the, the future pageant here is uh, the third, I suppose.
I'll be three.
Okay, we have three now. Um, it, you know, it's a problem up there. Uh, so if there's anything that we can do to add any additional parking, um, and also help you guys get in and out of there um, as you need to during the day and just open that up for parking. Um, it, like you said, in that, that whole side area, and then there's a, there's a, a space in the back too.
Yeah.
If we, if we could uh, make that like reasonably looking, good-looking parking.
Yeah, yeah.
Be it, you know, a, a ton of value, I think, to everybody. Um, and um, yes, and I think a good use of that space. I'm not sure I would, um, I'm not sure the, the use of that upstairs space would be compatible with um, with like education maintenance stuff. Um, but may, I think we have um, some stuff, um, it's like the dead animal freezer or whatever, all that stuff that's over in, right?
Dead animal freezer?
Yes, we do have, we have.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm, I'm totally serious. The
Yeah, it's not gonna go there. Whatever.
First night for me.
All right. No, but.
Well, we got a bunch of stuff at the old dairy barn.
Could be used as storage, could be used.
They can.
Which is, which is just being used for storage.
They can put it at D P W. It's not gonna go in the school apartment's building. Or we don't need a freezer full of dead raccoons.
In a hot attic?
In, yeah, yeah, they're, no, we're good.
Well, they don't stay there.
Not for long.
It's very, very temporary.
I've been told never to open the lid.
Okay.
So you know there's stuff in there sometimes.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I think everything the D P W has in the tree barn can go in their new facility. They've got plenty of space there.
Well, if they've got plenty of space there, why don't we move three trucks up there?
No. You got me there, Matt?
Yeah.
I have an answer, but I'm not gonna say it on television.
Okay. Uh, it, it's, well, it's a legitimate question.
So it's not.
No, so I, I would say, uh, there's not room, in my opinion, to move all that maintenance has into that building.
Okay.
But I also wasn't here when you were building it and you definitely should have done that.
That was definitely discussed.
In, in, in.
All right, but we don't think we could move, uh, reasonably move all the equipment.
If you look at what's in that building now and go tour D P W and what they have, I, I don't see where you're, where you're gonna put it.
Okay. Um, well, then for this board member, I'd prefer to just do the maintenance that we need to do on that building to keep it a viable building and improve the parking so that it's actual real parking and people can use it.
Have signage that.
Yeah.
People think they're getting away with something, like it's actually there for that purpose.
Like real parking?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, draw some lines.
That's what we want, cause we definitely need additional parking in that area.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so if we can make that happen, you know, um, as a part of the plan, I would definitely be in huge favor of that.
Okay.
And, you know, eventually if, well, we're not gonna knock the building down, so, um, yeah, that, that, that's what I would, uh, that's just my opinion.
Well, when that was a fire station, we used to be able to get twelve cars back there, so. Down the, down the side and across the back. It's just probably grow, all grown in.
Yeah, yeah. And there's stuff back there. We can clear all that out.
I'll just say the school committee's here.
Yeah, Dr. Cummings, don't turn around. They found you.
Uh, it, can I, uh, can I weigh in?
Of course.
Again? Yeah. I generally like to just sit here and hope for the end, but um, I think that you should knock it down. Create a municipal lot. Every business owner up there wants more municipal parking so that you can support the local businesses in that area. And then we can fund the building of a purpose-built Butler building that will actually serve the needs of the school department ma- maintenance department better, cause it will be built for their needs and not having a whole second floor that you can't use for anything. Cause you can't make it, I, I think it's, it's a lovely idea, Ray. You can't make it public meeting space cause it's not accessible.
Hmm.
Yeah, but the thing
I'm sorry, Matt.
I don't think it's compatible either. Just, you know, if you're gonna have trucks and trailers downstairs to have meeting rooms spaced out.
Right. But I think the school department's making, and I, I'm overstepping a little bit, Jay, but I think the school department's making do with the building that they were given or allowed to use or whatever the thing was fifteen years ago or how it was. But it's definitely not designed for what they're using it for. And if you funded a purpose-built Butler building, you could have a, a mezzanine and your storage and purpose-built storage for what they do every day. And you'd create parking for people like Sean who keeps raising his hand out of the corner of my eye. I can see him over there.
Is there any public input?
Archer, come on up.
Sure. Sean Paget, fifty-seven Old Upton Road. I guess I look at it a little bit differently. I would figure out what it would cost to renovate it first and look at the roof and look at things that are likely to go bad. Because it's probably not an eight hundred thousand dollar delta. It's probably less.
Delta between what?
Between um, renovating the existing building and building a new building. If it's a million dollars versus two hundred thousand estimated, based on just like for fun, um, my guess is it's closer than that. It's probably gonna be more to renovate it, especially if there's roof issues and things like that. And then the, the other question I would ask is maybe when you were, you know, doing the analysis is to where you could put it on school property, maybe there's another spot. Like, could you put in addition onto the new building, um, the new D P W building to make that?
Did I say that out loud? I'm sorry.
Well, I, I don't know what there is for space over there, but, but that's a building that wasn't in existence when you were, you know, sort of looking at this originally. So there might be other more cost-effective ways to, you know, to build.
As far as parking on the common goes, do you think that it, local businesses in that area would benefit from additional parking?
It, it comes up every day, ev- for everyone. Comes up every day.
That particular spot, I would say particularly for Bushel and Peck because that's That particular spot, I would say particularly for Bushel and Peck, because that's where the bottleneck occurs during the day. And I know staff sometimes try to park there, you know, to have a staff parking area over there. That's just one business that during the day. And just the, the nature of their building, it's a little bit of a mess.
Yeah, and it's certainly, you know, very, very selfishly, I'd much rather see you put it over at the school or at the DPW or something like that and make that into forty parking spaces, but, you know, I get it. But before I decided, I think I just want to know what the full cost of renovation would be. And I just, I'm sorry, I need to talk over you. I want to be clear that two hundred thousand that we threw out isn't really.
It's not a real thing.
But it's, it's not a real thing, but also not to get, a real money, but not. That, that's to, it's a barely functional space now. This is to get one tier up. This isn't all the bells and whistles and.
So it's not apples to apples.
Yeah, yeah, you do that, I, I, the delta won't be two hun- be eight hundred, it will be closer. I, I would agree with that, but I wasn't thinking about a new building either.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Man.
So, so I think the, the, by the way, I'm not in favor of this at all. Because, one, we need to do some type of engineering to determine how many spots we can actually get on that piece of property, which is going to be not many. Once that building's down, it's not a big piece of property. And how much it's going to cost the town and the taxpayer per space. Because if it's a million dollars to take it down and do all of the remediation and build that and put in drainage and, and everything. You know, and you're going to get twenty spaces out of it. That's a lot of money per space. And, and it's not, to me, that's not worth it unless we're charging people to park there. Because there's no return on investment anywhere. If we put two hundred thousand dollars into this building and the school department doesn't build and, and people say a million dollars for a building, it's going to be a million five before you, before you're done building, building a, you know, a five thousand square foot building or whatever.
How big is it?
Five thousand square feet.
Oh, okay.
What, I'm just throwing that out there.
Right.
I'm just saying. Before we do anything like that, find out how many spaces you can get on that. Find out how much it's going to cost to do it. And then make a determination, is this even worth it or can we just renovate the building and keep the school department in there? You know, I, I mean, i- it's just to, to discuss taking that building down and creating twenty spaces, and I'm just throwing that out there because I'm not even sure twenty spaces can get in there, but twenty spaces. There's, it's not, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna go to town meeting and it's going to get thrown right back in your face because no one's going to vote for it.
Mr. Chair, I would counter that we're not really talking about parking spaces as much in my opinion as how much is it going to cost to renovate this building to meet your needs versus how much will a new building or some other iteration of a building attached to some other building cost? And then I can make somewhat of an informed decision, not necessarily, you know, the, the parking spaces could be a bonus here, but really the question is, we renovate this for how much? Five hundred thousand? A new building is one million or nine hundred, whatever? Well, then you're looking at a different conversation. So I think that, I don't know, how do we get those numbers, I guess?
What's the board's ask in terms of additional information?
I'd like to see how many spaces can fit on that spot if you took the building down.
Okay.
Legally, yeah, well, not, we, we have to do it legally anyway, but you got twenty feet, twenty-five feet and twenty feet. Okay, that's sixty-five feet.
It's not going to be a lot.
How deep is it and how many can we get in there? So.
So I'm guessing a, uh, back of the envelope.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
It's good enough for that information. So is that something we could get from planning?
No, I, I.
DPW, yeah.
Okay.
Fine, um, okay.
And, and then on, and then on Jay's end, get pricing on doors, get pricing on windows, get pricing on, on all of that.
Doors, windows, paint, repointing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and I, we got to look at the roof.
Okay.
With my, you can't.
I think it was done, I think it was done in the lady.
Life of the roof and then cost.
Y- yeah, because, I mean, otherwise we're making some investment and then coming back.
Sure.
Three years later and saying we need another three hundred grand, that might change my mind.
Okay.
Significantly. So I think, you know, what, what you need to bring the building actually up into a, uh, I don't know. A working, operationally sound building.
Yeah.
For the, for the near future, because that's going to be the comparison, I think, that we would, uh, make with, uh, you know, what do you call it, Butler Building?
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah.
I can do all that.
Ms. Meyer, come on up.
Thank you. Amy Meyer, thirty-six Ferry Street. I remember the school committee, but just asking a question for myself. I apologize, I wasn't able to listen to the beginning of this meeting. Is this a historical building?
No.
Do we know?
Right, it was built in nineteen fifty-three.
It is, it is not.
Oh, it's not.
It is not, okay, so we're not bound by any special rules or, great, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Okay.
That would make me a historical building.
I'm not saying a word over here, Rick.
And, uh, so cost of bringing the building up to basically snuff, um, do we want to ask for a refresh of the estimate for the Butler Building, like?
Yeah, if we determine square footage, I can help with that.
Okay.
I'm just, you know, obviously conscious of our, uh, our debt in Grafton, and that sounds like something that would need to be bonded and excluded and all that, and.
Yeah, I mean, you have some debt rolling off in twenty-five?
The next big one's the high school in thirty, thirty-one and thirty-two.
There's another one in twenty-five or twenty-six. Yeah, I can, I can double down on that.
So I'm not sure I'd be in favor necessarily of adding additional.
I, I, all I'm saying is that that's your, that's your opportunity.
Sure.
If you, if you want to create parking at the common.
Yeah.
That's where you're going to do it.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I get it. Um, well, yeah, that's true.
If, if we, if we get the GSX property developed on the other side, you have potential there. But that's an if that we don't control, we do control this conversation.
Yeah. Okay. Um, any additional discussion?
I'm done.
Alright, then we're moving on. Thanks.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Okay, uh, One Grafton Common. Um, so, yeah.
This is a continuation of the conversation that we had a year ago.
Yeah.
About what direction does the board want us to go in, um, whether that is, um, you know, looking at the economic viability of the building, um, but also we need our marching orders from the select board so that we will go out and create a renovation plan or architectural plan, whatever you want to call it, for the repointing of the building. Um, basically everything exterior there needs to be looked at, so the, um, varying, there's varying states of, of decay, um, but it's windows pointing probably some of the exterior woodworking. Um, you'd want someone to come and do a comprehensive, um, architectural plan to tell you what exactly needs to be done and how it needs to be done. And then we would go from there. So if the board wants us to go in that direction, my thought is that we would request, uh, the money for the design um, at the fall town meeting through CPC, go through them for that project money. Um, and then come back in the spring to, uh, get the full co- uh, money for renovation. Renovation's not the right word, um, restoration is the word I'm looking for.
There you go.
Yep, yep.
Actually, just maintenance.
No.
No.
Don't say that.
I'd be on that.
I get myself, that's how I get jammed up every time.
Sorry.
Restoration.
Restoration.
Yeah, never been touched.
What do you think the design number would be?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that it's between forty and seventy thousand dollars. It's what it costs.
Come on up.
Elizabeth Spiny, seventy-one Potter Hill Road. Um, I'm putting on my Vice President of Apple Tree Arts hat for a moment. Um, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent on this, but I believe some of that work, some of that design work and investigation into the repointing and the windows and all that was done years back, so before money is spent, I would just say let's have a conversation and look back and see, maybe, maybe some of it needs updated, but I know that we were looking at that and we had numbers and we had an idea of what needed to be done several years ago, so I, I believe some of that's already been done.
The, the only plan I'm able to locate, um, gives you basic cost factors for, say, the amount of square footage of brick repointed. Um, number of windows, those type of, those type of things. Um, and what we really need is, um, someone that specializes in historic re- restoration to come and actually show on a plan what needs to be repointed and where. So, um, I had done this with a, a granite building. It was a eighteen sixty-four Gothic structure. Um, they actually come with a laser and scan the entire exterior of the building and then you can actually give the people bidding on it. This is where you're going to repoint, this is where you're going to replace, this is the depth at which you need to go, this is where we have water. I didn't see anything to that level. Um, I saw things that would give us a good faith estimate of what it would cost.
Okay.
And I, I think we need, I think we need to update that information.
Yeah.
So that we know how much it'll cost. But I think that we, if we all agree that we have to do it eventually, um, you know, we really need a very specific document so that we can go out to bid and just get that work done.
Okay.
I, I, and, and, um, you would realistically normally do this in two steps.
Mm-hmm.
Your cost estimator, then go with your architect, um, but I think I think it's a foregone conclusion and I would just roll them together and save a little money on the planning.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just hoping to save money too, so if anything's already been done, we want to make sure we tap into that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Chairman, we, we can't get enough info out of the digital, the digital, uh, pictures of the, of the building itself? Because, I mean, I've done that before and it, it actually works really well.
Yep, so you can, you can.
Without doing a design, that's what I meant.
I, I would not be in favor of that. Um, I think having done.
It's the second time tonight.
I know. Just assume when you talk, I'm going to disagree. Um, no, I, I would not be in favor of that, having done some restoration work to, a lot of stone wall work and a lot of, um, exterior mostly granite work. Um, generally speaking, when you have leeway in your specification, that's when the work gets done improperly. And so you'll save twenty thousand dollars on your design and you'll spend fifty thousand dollars fixing it later. So that's always my approach at this point, when, when we're doing this repointing work especially. Is to have someone come in, they'll go up on a lift and they'll chip and they'll feel everything out and they'll figure out depths and all of the rest of it, and then we'll have it done right, done the one time and then move on. Then we'll all be dead by the time it needs to be done again.
Oh, isn't that depressing?
Not for me. I drive by stone walls every day on my way to work and I'll be like, I had that done and I'll be dead before I have to, I have to be touched again. I did a wonderful job on that.
It's a great outlook.
It is. It is, that's, that's the town administrator's dream.
So, uh, question.
Yeah.
The, somebody comes in and literally goes on a ladder scaffolding, goes through it brick by brick. What is the laser part you're, you're talking about?
So what they do is, um, they scan the entire exterior of the building.
Yeah.
And then they use that to make their schematic, so that when you're the, um, the guy doing the repointing, right?
Yeah, B seven.
Right, this is where you're going to be and this is the depth I want you to go to because I, I checked and, you know, this, you only have to, you only have to chip out half inch.
Yeah.
But over here, you need to chip out all the way because we've got water penetrating behind that wall and that's how we're going to stop that.
And that's going to take a crew of people, probably weeks.
It actually, I, I had someone do a building that's at, uh, I would say at least fifty percent bigger than One Grafton Common, and it took them a week. Uh, it was one, one, um, historic mason on a lift and then the other person doing all the electronics and it went pretty quick. They, if you get.
Are you saying a week for the repair or a week?
No, for the analysis.
You're asking about the repair, weren't you?
No, I'm asking about how do they determine that, through the analysis?
Yep.
Discovery phase.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Through the chair, sure.
Alright, come on up.
You know, the, the, the woodwork is actually not as bad as you would think. I replaced a whole bunch of the woodwork in the back last year around the vault. Um, there, and then I also repaired the eaves, so the water shouldn't be penetrating. I haven't had it painted because I wanted to see if the water was penetr- still penetrating before we did that, but the woodwork is actually, you know, surprisingly not that bad. Um, the windows are a mess. And, you know, there's two ways to go with that, like either replace the windows or get somebody up there to do some fix. Like if, if we're going to spend forty, seventy thousand dollars on analysis, I'd love to spend ten thousand dollars on getting some of those windows fixed that are gonna leave glass on people, um, because there are some that are dangerous. In terms of the brick, the brick isn't terrible on the, on the street sides because that's a higher quality brick. The place where it's pretty bad is on the church side because that was the side that didn't show, so they use a lower quality brick there and that's pretty, um, pretty soft. There are a couple of places in the back of the building where if you just drive by, you'll see there are a few bricks that are missing. Um, I don't think that costs a tremendous amount to fix, but the place that's going to cost money is going to be on the, on the church side, I think.
Makes sense.
What are you going to do?
Well, what would the board like to do? That's a good question. Uh, it's, to me, it, it, um, feels like this is a project that will need some phasing. And maybe there's some, uh, short-term stuff that we can do with window replacement. I'm not sure how much we'd be talking about for that, but, um, and then, uh, yeah, just authorization for, for moving forward with the design.
Well, I think in the, in the phasing portion of it, if, Evan, if we do the, the, um, the design of this and we go to town meeting in October and we get forty grand or whatever, whatever it is, we get that. Then we have to determine, once we get the estimates on what the work is and how much disruption and everything else that goes along with it, how much this is all going to cost. I think we're going to be very shocked at how much it's going to cost, and then we have to get that money. So this is, in, in phasing programs, Matt, I would say that, you know, the windows uh, in the trim would be the, like, phase one. And then the brick would be phase two. So we really need to have those prices to, to find out what this is all going to cost.
Yeah, that's exactly, I think about it.
Yeah, and get it, you know, i- if we need the forty grand or whatever it is to, at town meeting in October, we get the forty grand, we do the, we do the, keep in mind, we own this building. We are responsible for this building. So, um, you know, that's, that's where we go. I think that's, I mean, that's my opinion.
Next step, we get Evan working with CPC to get some CPA funds allocated for Fall Town Meeting for this, uh.
Yeah, once you get a pricing and everything like that, yeah.
Yeah, we'll work with the architect to get a baseline price of what it would cost to do this. Um, and then that's the, the number that we'd use for CPC too.
Can we do a couple of requests, uh, one for some of the windows and I've just, if there's a safety issue and there's.
There's probably, sorry.
Yeah, come on up.
You know, I've never gone around and counted, but there are probably four to six windows that really should be pointed and, like, there's cracked glass that could fall out and there's some old, um, you know, what do you call them, the old storm windows that are just a mess and they're kind of, you know, one windstorm away from falling out. So, you know, I don't think that's a huge cost, right, in, in the big scheme of things, like painting the dental molding around the top is a pretty huge cost because that's going to be scaffolding and time-consuming and all that sort of thing. But if we could find somebody to just repair some of the windows, and by the way, if you want me to do that, I'll go do that, right? Last year.
Thank you.
But.
Get a light, drop it now.
Well, but, I mean, you know, I put a new roof and repaired a bunch of stuff last year that wasn't, that's not my mandate, but I just did it because it was a problem. Um, if, you know, if we're saying it's going to be another year before we do anything with the windows, then.
Be at least that.
You know, I get.
It'll be at least that.
You know, I don't want somebody to get hit with a piece of glass.
So what we should do is in the next week or two, depending on your availability, you and I can take a walk around and figure out how many we're talking about and then get someone in there to give us a, an estimate on, on those more immediate repairs.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm sure I can get those, most of those windows stabilized for a pretty small amount of money relative to what you guys are talking about here, but I haven't done anything because I didn't know where we were going with it. You know, the stuff I worked on last year was like immediate concern because it was rotten, you know, bees and, you know, stuff falling off the siding, so, uh, off the trim, so.
It's pretty easy to do. You're not replacing the whole window, you're replacing the panes. Those are really easy to do. You take them out, put new ones in, glazing it, you tack them in, you put the glazing in.
The the issue, the issue, as you know, is whenever you touch a two hundred year old, a hundred and fifty year old window, sometimes pieces fall out.
I just don't wanna do the third story because I'm afraid of heights. But you can do that quick and cheap. Especially, not you, I mean, it can be done quickly and inexpensively. From my personal experience.
And you volunteered to do it.
Yes, I do.
You have to use historic glass to do that?
Uh yeah, now, there's not that much broken glass and historic glass is super expensive. It's like ten times as much as regular glass and you know, we had to do that in a few places in the last couple of years when things cracked, but um in most of the really dangerous stuff right now is more, you know, more glazing. The the issue is when you get windows that are that old and you try to put the glazing pins in, they just go right through the wood and you know, then you're stuck trying to rebuild the sash. Uh I think we could just take off some of the um the storm windows and just get rid of them. It's, you know, the problem with that is then then you've got a drafty window, right? You know, putting even a storm window, you know, do you wanna spend a hundred dollars putting a new storm window on a window that's gonna be replaced in a a couple of years, maybe, maybe not, I don't know. Actually, probably can't get one for a hundred anymore, but.
I was thinking that way, I said that.
I'm hearing that we have a good general direction here. We have some short term, some some longer term stuff. So if the board, it sounds like the board's uh of the consensus that we should move forward with uh CPC request uh for some uh design work and then uh just discussion and a walkthrough for you guys to come to with some uh some cost estimates for that as well. Okay, um let's see, tier two prioritization plan.
Hello, members of the board. Um I will be presenting the tier two prioritization plan as part of the complete streets process. I for the um new member, hello, my name is Fiona Coughlin. I am the town planner. Nice to meet you virtually. Sure I'll meet you in person.
Nice to meet you.
So um I just wanna, I'm going to briefly go over uh the prioritization plan. Essentially, it's a it's a list of projects that the town can pursue um for funding through MassDOT. Grafton became a complete streets community uh a few years ago and the first piece of that was establishing a policy which was done by my predecessor. Um the second, that was tier one. Tier two, this this um list is uh the prioritization plan is kind of the next step. So basically, you know, you establish your policy, you get a list of projects that you would like to pursue and then the tier three will be, you know, pursuing funding for implementation. Unfortunately, I kinda came in at the tail end of the tier two prioritization plan process. Um it was a a lot of the outreach and the compilation of the projects was conducted in twenty twenty-two before I came to Grafton and I kinda was basically responsible for closing, closing it out with our consulting team and getting any last minute details. So we're at this point, um the planning board has reviewed the uh prioritization plan and has approved it. Um and so this is just kind of our final check with the select board uh for approval. Um I'm happy to give more more context about the prioritization plan and um how we got to where we are if the board would like that.
Fiona, does uh it does Mill Street Park, I mean, sorry, Whitney Park come uh fall into this? Or we just, it does, okay.
Yes, it does. Yes, and we did discuss um Whitney Park uh and the interconnectivity with Complete Streets at our workshop and that consultant that did our Complete Streets prioritization plan attended that workshop. Anyone have any other questions for for me about the plan or any last minute additions or thoughts before we submit to MassDOT for final approval?
Yes, if if you could, just if you could just walk us through um how you arrived at this ranking?
Sure, absolutely. So I, so the outreach, let me pull up my notes here from before. So the li- the finalized list was um basically a uh compilation of field work that was done over, I believe, the summer of twenty twenty-two, looking at three priority areas in Grafton, North Grafton, Central Grafton and South Grafton. And at the time, the um that the town planner had assisted with with that outreach and with that kind of initial listing. Um in addition to to that, the CMRPC or Central uh Mass Regional Planning Commission, who's our regional planning agency that we do a lot of planning projects with. They had done additional field, their transportation department did additional field work and had looked at regional projects that were going on, um save routes to school projects and other other data to add to the list. Um there was a specific meeting um with uh at the senior center, I believe, in um September of twenty twenty-two to get feedback. Um and then the projects identified for consideration um were finalized between October twenty twenty-two and um January twenty twenty-three. So again, I was, unfortunately, I kind of came in at the end. I had only been in Grafton for about a month at that point, but um so that was, that was uh how we, a kind of rough explanation of how we got to where we are today. Um in terms of out specific outreach, um I know that the um the consulting team had worked closely with the DPW and other staff in town as well, making sure that the list was checked by police, fire, mainly DPW, the highway superintendent, et cetera. So I think every, you know, everyone's eyes were were on it last year to get this final list.
And so when this list gets submitted, does does this commit us to this ranking or like how will this be used once it gets uh to CMRPC or whoever goes to?
That's a good question. So I, we we don't have to follow the list to a T and ultimately um the planning board is the entity that will decide which projects are pursued in what order. It's just, I think that's just how the contracting worked out. But ultimately, any group or member of the public or whomever can address the planning board and um myself and planning department requesting to do a project that's on the list. It's really, the list is important because if you, if there's a project that's not on there that needs attention, it doesn't really open up the ability to apply for grants. Well, the, well, I guess not, you know, if if it's documented in the Complete Streets prioritization plan, the likelihood of receiving a grant to improve the road sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera, is um increased.
Okay, I'm just looking at uh Pleasant Street is uh towards the bottom. You know, this board endorsed a lip for a, you know, fairly dense development in that area and I just wonder it seems like the facts would have changed a little bit and maybe our priority would change accordingly. So I'm just wondering about moving things around and is there likelihood that um things higher on the list would be more likely funded? Or is it just the case that if it's on the list, then?
My understanding is if it's, yes, if it's closer to the top, then it's it's considered a priority project.
Got it, okay.
And this is just the likelihood that we will get grant funding through the Complete Streets program for the project. Not the likelihood that Grafton will do the work at any point.
Right, right, exactly. Um it's, you know, it's really like a, it's a wish list for, you know, projects to pursue going forward and, you know, it's just the ability to to open up more more options for the town funding wise when we go to tier three eventually.
Sure. So um I understand that once we get there, it'll be, it's about three hundred grand a year, I think.
Yes.
But I heard, is that pretty much, uh is that pretty consistent year over year?
That's a good question, Matt. Um the, I am not uh sure about that. I can follow up though and I can confirm with our consulting team.
Yeah, it's a pretty reasonable expectation. Um from what I've seen in other communities year over year, I haven't seen a lot of wavering in that program as far as funding goes from the state.
Okay, so we're talking many, 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 many years. I'm just looking at the sidewalk uh potential uh on some of these and so we, you know, obviously this would take a a long time for us to make sort of, I wouldn't say meaningful, but three hundred grand doesn't go a long way with sidewalks.
No, it's an offset to our cost in trying to create walkability. That's really all it is. It's they're incentivizing us to to do it. Um I will say that Grafton is very late to the game. If you look at the Complete Streets map, you're like the only town in the area that isn't a complete streets community.
We're working on it.
No, I know. This is great. What I'm saying is, you know, we're behind on what that three hundred thousand dollars year over year would have, would have, would have got us. Years, years past when when paving and sidewalks were less money. But this is great work from Fiona. Lot of work from Fiona and I think it's uh really uh a a project to be praised on Fiona. It really is uh, really is some great work.
Thanks, Evan. I wish I could take more credit for, you know, the work that was done in uh two thousand and uh twenty twenty-two rather um when a lot of outreach was being done. But yeah, I'm happy to see that we are uh wrapping up this this phase of it and and getting ready to submit hopefully.
You're here at the end, Fiona. That's what counts.
Uh Matt, through um just a question on like the Oak Street sidewalk, did we, didn't we just do that? That's like number sixteen. Unless there's another part to Oak Street, but the we paved it and that sidewalk was done. And that was just to bring it up, but the other thing was like the bike lanes, was that something that um there, I feel like I saw something about um Bridge Street, but I can't find it now in this document. Like a bike lane there and then also on Pleasant Street.
Yes, when you do a complete streets project, you get basically points for adding things that make the community more connected, right? So you add a point, a bike lane to your project, it's gonna bump you up on the list of getting your money. You add sidewalks, now you're bumped up the list. There are, the, one of the misnomers that I I am, I've I've seen about the Complete Street programs that you have to do a bike lane, you have to do sidewalks, you have to do the the, that's actually not true. Only if projects get approved that aren't adding sidewalks or aren't adding a bike lane because of the design of the road. However, having those elements makes you much more likely to be eligible for this funding and other funding through the state, whether that's Mass Works or something else.
Yeah, I did see a bike lane on Pleasant Street.
Well, yeah, that one, and I mean, if there was space, I mean, Lord knows, that's, it's a rough place to ride. I'm riding a lot right now. Um but the, there was Bridge, I thought it was Bridge Street going over to Waterville, but.
I think there was a combination of that and sidewalk. I do remember reading that.
So same thing though, like of all the places to choose, Bridge Street over to Waterville, but maybe there was a a reason that I don't see.
I mean, well, you wouldn't have a direct connection at the end of Bridge when you get over on the other side. You'd have to cross over one twenty, one twenty-two to get to the sidewalk there, but
Anyway.
I mean, it connects you up to the Whitney Park and all that stuff still. I'm gonna uh nudge this forward a little bit here. So um thank you Fiona for for presenting. This looks great. Um I love the list. Looks like it was a ton of work, so um a lot of credit for everybody that was involved in that, yourself included. Did you need to us to approve this or did you just need to um present it to us?
Yeah, I I think, you know, ge- getting your approval would be ideal. And I wish, well, say, I just wanna respond to to Ann's comment. Um you know, if there is a project that you're noticing like that just does not seem pertinent. You know, I I'm more than happy to relay that to the consulting team and and just let them know that, you know, this, that that particular project, the Bridge Street, does doesn't seem like something that should be pursued at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um well, if that's the case, unless there's any additional discussion, I'll take a motion.
Uh move the board vote to endorse the tier two prioritization plan as presented.
I have motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.
Thanks Fiona. Thanks, planning board. Okay, next up we have service contract with planners in a pinch.
This is our uh consultant that we use for planning. It should not have been in the packet. This is what I generally sign, but I was sick. Uh and so it made it in there. So there's no harm in the select board voting to approve it and then just having somebody sign it. It's fine.
Uh do you want us to have to uh have you sign it or um?
At this, at this point, you can just sign it because I would have just signed it myself.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the service contract with planners in a pinch as presented.
I have motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good stuff, alright. Uh let's see, what is next? We have the PEC agreement.
Yeah, so uh I believe the board is fairly well versed in this. I've been trying to keep you up to date on all the PEC meetings we've had. Uh essentially, we were able to reach agreement. Uh the town of Grafton is moving from a um sole agreement with Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare to the Mass Strategic Health Group, which is a a group of municipalities that are all group purchasing health insurance. Um our original uh increase we were looking at with Harvard Pilgrim Direct was eight percent. Uh we were able to negotiate with Harvard, or no, sorry, Mass Strategic Health Group uh to four point three percent, which is a pretty big win for us, even though it's an increase. It's with our, with our um loss ratio, that's actually a really good place for us to be. Further, we were able to change the deductibles from two thousand, four thousand in which the town was paying a thousand of 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 an individual's deductible and two thousand of a family deductible in a retroactive manner. We were able to get rid of those and go down to five hundred and a thousand. So we were able to correct that back, which is another cost that you won't really see on the balance sheet, but is is there.
That cost doesn't move to the employee.
Doesn't move to the employee. And it doesn't move to the town. It's gone. We were using an HRA system to do that. So that, that's, my opinion, that's the biggest win of the whole thing. The the other win that we had is um we were able to add vision. We've never had a vision plan. We were able to add vision. And we were also able to move, um the retirees will come over in um January, so that they're, they just work on different calendars than we work. So active employees, July one, uh everybody else in January, so. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a win for us. Uh we'll continue to meet to look at other options like GIC. But this is where I was going just a second ago before I lost my train of thought. Um one of the other big wins is that we are, no one had to change plans. It's, it's, we're still in Harvard Pilgrim, we're just Harvard Pilgrim through this other group and saved a boatload of money, so. Win, win for us uh in the end here, so very happy with it.
Any questions?
I did notice the deduct deductibles because they're pretty impressive.
Yeah, I was uh very happy.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the PEC agreement as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Alright, uh let's see, we have the Worcester Regional Retirement System COLA.
Yep, so this is our retirement system. Generally, I think this is an annual thing that we we get or it's every uh three years. I can't remember, but um they give us a one-time additional cost of living adjustment for retirees. Um this time they're requesting a two percent um back to July of twenty twenty-two. So the way this works is that if um a majority of of uh towns in the Worcester Regional Retirement System vote to allow the COLA, then the COLA takes place. Um I would tell you by looking at what other towns are doing, I'm pretty sure it's a moot point. Whether Grafton votes yes or not, we're still gonna be assessed the two percent because it's heading that way. Um but I also think it it's a pretty fair request, given what we've seen with inflation, two percent's not even close to what what we've seen for for folks that are living on a fixed income, so I would be in support of you approving that.
Makes sense. Any uh discussion? Baron Dan, I will take a motion.
I move the board vote to accept the provisions in chapter si- two six nine of the Acts of twenty twenty-two to provide a one-time additional two percent cost of living adjustment for Worcester Regional Retirement System retirees retroactive to July one, twenty twenty-two.
I have motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh let's see, we have the um charge and composition of the trustees of soldiers and sailors memorials.
Will's gonna take that. Will's gonna take that for us.
Yeah, I'm gonna just throw that up on the screen. So this has come about in talking with, uh, Bob DiToma and Justin Stone, who are on the Veterans Advisory Committee. The trustees of soldiers and sailors' memorials is something that's established by Mass General Law, section forty-one, chapter forty-one, section one oh five. Uh, if a town takes in gifts, money, or appropriates fund for memorials, they have to have that trustees. And this essentially just puts pen to paper and codifies what that board is required to do. Um, if you look, it covers the term of office. It's staggered to begin with, and then it's a three-year reappointment. It sets the officers. The statute only requires a chair and a clerk. The trustees in Grafton have also established a vice clerk position, so we included that in there. And the three duties and responsibilities are exactly what's enumerated in the law. Uh, this has changed a little bit from what's in the packet. Uh, I've been talking to Bob DiToma. And the composition that they've been running with is a little different. So he and I need to meet to reconcile what they're doing and what we wanna be doing, just so we don't cause any grief for either party. So we anticipate cleaning this up and bringing it back at a future meeting for you to vote to ratify and sign. Um, but I still wanted it, wanted to present it to all of you to get feedback and let you know where we're at with it.
Any comments or questions? Okay, thanks. Appreciate that. Alright, uh, town meeting recap.
Yeah, so this is something that I like to request, uh, every year, and this is just the meeting after town meeting. Uh, to get any feedback from members of the board, um, what they liked, what they didn't like, any feedback they have on what we could be doing differently or better.
Okay.
In general.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mead.
I think, and I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna, we resolve the mistakes that happened last year. And, and I think that, I think it was, it was well done. I think everybody did a great job. Um, I think the only, the only question, and, and I talked to you about this, is the, is the presentation for George Hill. And Dawn kinda moved on before she even got to it.
Yeah.
Um, that was the only thing. Other than that, I think the, I think the town meeting went fantastic. You know, to fill that space and, and control the crowd and, you know, I think it was done very well.
I felt it was the best one that's been, that we've done since I've been here. So, my, I, I felt, I left that meeting feeling like, like we had done our, our job and we had the glitch with the, the clickers. There's really not anything we can do about that. That happened before the meeting.
Do you know what those are?
Yeah, so FinCom voted to purchase an, the, the new system. At town.
Alright, cuz it seemed kind of ridiculous to me. And maybe we bought into that technology a little bit early.
I think you actually, you bought into it both early and late.
Yeah, late.
Early, early adopter, but late technology. It is, it is super antiquated. I mean, just.
It takes more time.
Yeah.
It does take more time to, to call a vote.
Yeah, the technology's come a long way too, just in the amount of time. So we're gonna be exploring other options. We'll be including Dawn in, in that, uh, process to, uh, see if we can get some updated technology. And then, you know, otherwise, the only things that I had were, that were qualms was, I had a budget presentation and the media moves a little too quick for that. And I did have Georgia Road queued up. Um, I honestly think reading the room, everybody was sick of presentations by the time we got there and was pretty much already knew how they were gonna vote. But we did have it queued up. So it's just a matter of probably recommunicating that back to, to Dawn, cuz she gets in a, a rhythm up there.
I don't think that there was one person in that room that didn't know how they were gonna vote when they walked in the door.
No, that's generally how town meeting work. Um, but otherwise, I thought the rest of it went really well. I think Will did a great job. Dawn did a great job.
You did a great job.
Thanks, buddy. No, but I, I do think it was, we worked out a lot of the kinks that we had had at the, the previous one.
So I have a couple of things. So I didn't know that you had a presentation for George Hill.
Yeah.
Or the budget, cuz those are two things that people, I didn't so much think about the budget, but George Hill, I was expecting something.
Yep.
And then folks asked about that after. So I think that's good that you clarified tonight that that was just something, next time we'll communicate, then Dawn will slow it down. I mean, I think that, um, Peter ended up kinda doing the George Hill thing through his questions, but, I'm glad that he did that. I also understand that maybe like some of the machi- a couple of machines might have been down out front, like the check-in machines. Is that something that the clerks?
Yep.
Dealing with? Okay. Um, and then just the warrants, making sure that we have enough warrants, obviously, for everybody next time. I know that. That's what I was told.
No, I don't believe that was the case.
I did not hear that we ran out.
Okay.
Cuz we had four hundred and fifty people there and I think we did five hundred and something copies.
Uh, yeah, once we collected the one, two, or three down, it was right around there.
Okay. Alright, so that was just communicated to me that there weren't enough, but maybe it was just a couple of people. Um, just a thing, maybe an extra mic for the clerk, so that Dawn doesn't go back and forth.
Yeah, so this was our first outing with a, we, we have a hired sound engineer now.
Great.
Which is why the sound was the best. It's, I mean, it was, it was really much better. Somewhere lost in translation was the clerk for the mic. So,
Okay.
Uh, we, we did make a note of that and we'll rectify that for next time.
They had the monitors set up on the front of the stage too, and, but we, it's, it's still in an ideal world, if we could get some sound back to the tables, it would be nice. It's still.
Yeah, they were still, they were a little low. I think that when, when we did the initial sound checks, you're in a room with no people.
Right.
Um, and so the other, the other missing component, and it's just, it's, it's, part of it's the design of the Grafton High School is that the sound engineer guy's way over there. And so it's hard to make adjustments on the fly because we're not communicating with that person. Plus, once the meeting gets going, you're pretty much focused in. So we did notice that. Uh, you know, I couldn't hear. I'm just not good at that when there's a lot of other noise in the room. I have to keep leaning to, to, uh, Colleen and say, what, what did they say?
Yeah.
Because I just, I just, I can't, I can't discern it. Um, but yeah, that's a good point too, is having the, the monitors turned up so we can hear better.
Well, the other thing is, is that they turn up the mic when you, when you go to speak. So the first four or five words, no one really can hear. So they should just keep the mics up and then shut the, shut the mics off at the, at the desk.
Yeah, so they, uh, we, the sound engineers tend, general, generally don't do that because the users of the mics forget to turn them on with, with regularity. I think that one thing that we could do that, that I've done in previous town meetings is, um, we actually give them the warrant and the motion list, so that they know. I mean, there's, there's gonna be odd times when raised, like I, I'd like to speak, madam moderator, whatever that is. But generally speaking, we know Anne Marie's next and she's turned on as soon as the other person turned off. Because then we're not chasing feedback the whole time. But I, I agree. I mean, there was, there's definitely some lag there.
Or at least signal them somehow that.
Yeah, it was a little bit of a, it was a little bit of a learning curve, um, having this new, uh, group. But that was, that was really Jay and, um, um, Neil Trahan from the, uh, school district that did all of that, put all that in place. And that was a huge weight off everyone's shoulders, having a professional person do that. So I really appreciated that from them.
So I thought, uh, town meeting was great. Um, the one, I guess, observation that I made, um, was if we have to resort to, uh, hand raising again, um, we should either make sure everybody has a paddle or have everybody just raise their hands. Cuz it just, there wasn't anything that was close necessarily, so I don't think it was a problem. But.
Agreed.
It just, you know, it, somebody raising a paddle seemed more, because it's so bright.
Yeah.
Seemed more obvious than somebody.
Yep, and so after that, we did order or, or ask the clerk to order enough paddles to bring us up to six hundred.
Right.
Cuz we, we, I don't remember how many we bought when we did the outdoor town meetings for COVID. Um, but it wasn't four hundred and fifty cuz we ran out, you know, early. So, um, we're just gonna bring it up to six hundred. They're short money to buy. So just have them and then they'll always be a backup. To, the clickers ever go down again or something happens.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that the votes are.
No, we, we, we noticed that too and, and agree.
Okay. Um, the other thing is, uh, whose idea was the, um, bingo?
That's Dawn Andersons.
I loved that.
Yeah.
Excellent addition.
It was not Dawn's? It was Amy Mars, like I said.
Okay, there you go. Thank you, Ms. Mars. I enjoyed that.
Sure. But, but Dawn's a fund ma- moderator and she allowed it.
So how that came about, Amy Mars thirty-sixth, how that came about was that I had done civics with the eighth graders the previous week. And they were invited to attend town meeting to see town meeting in action. And I had done this last year. I gave them little bingo sheets and that's when they sat in that visitor's section and it was an attempt to kinda keep some sort of order. This year, the kids were spread out throughout the audience, which to your point about the paddles, we really need to have paddles because some of the eighth graders were told they could vote. They were not told that. Um, the bingo was for the children and somehow it got distributed to the adults, which I don't mind. But I'm glad you had fun and I plan to do it again in the future.
I enjoyed it. Thank you so much, Ms. Mars. Alright, um, what else we got here? Um, any additional comments about, uh, town meeting? Okay, okay. Uh, so my board reports.
Do a quick one. Uh, just like to thank the fire department. They put on their open house, uh, on Saturday. It seemed like it was, it was well participated in. They had events at, at every little stop, activities that you could pick up. Um, if, they had a, a postcard that had designations for each station. If you got that stamped at each location, you could then submit it. Uh, and try to win a ride in a fire truck to school.
Did you get, did you win?
I asked if I could get a ride to work. I'm hoping that they will accommodate that request. Um, I can tell you, uh, there were, I was, I was told anyways, there were not a lot of cards submitted at Station Three where I submitted mine. And even though it's cumulative for all the stations, I'm feeling pretty good. But yeah, good, good participation, uh, good mix of people. Um, I was lightly recruited at each station, which was good, but they weren't pressing or, you know, forceful in their uh, approach. It was just a, hey, you're an able-bodied guy. Why don't you fight some fires with us? Yeah, it was, it was great. So thank you, Fire Department.
Well, I understand on the back of that too, they had an application, uh, for somebody who's interested. So, uh, that's great. I mean, that's, that's what it's all about.
I think you should join.
Yeah.
Wha- what did I just say? I think you should join.
You wanna fight fires with me, Ray?
Hey, I'm done fighting.
Then they're done that.
Why, I, why don't you join? You should. I'm, I'm not joking. I'm not joking.
They, they had me seriously considering it. Uh, Chief Matthew said, I've got twenty-two good years left in me and, uh,
Him or you?
Me, yeah. Allegedly. Uh, but yeah, that was, those were his words. So I'm, I'm considering it.
You should.
Alright, there will be no firefighting on this board. Okay.
I have something.
Yeah, go for it.
So the open space and recreation meeting, or sorry, committee met last week. I believe, yeah, it was last week. And, um, primarily, we spoke about the updating the trails committee charge, which I brought to you probably in the fall. And, um, you wanted, the, the board at the time wanted a bit more of a robust charge and some more details. And I think that, so we worked out some of that in the last few months. And, um, so the chair is just kinda cleaning up our comments from our last meeting. And I'll reach out to you, um, as a chair to try to get this on perhaps our next agenda if we're ready on that. The only other thing that we're still discussing is, um, a little bit about the land use and how we might wanna be involved in that as a committee. It seems that perhaps through the, um, the, the, uh, not capital plan, but the master plan, sorry, that we're looking at now. That's going to be part of that is looking at land use. And so maybe a cup, part of this committee could be part of that. Instead of our committee looking at that land use separately. Um, and then additionally, we're just kinda continuing to follow up on the actual, um, open space and rec plan and making sure that departments are following what they're doing. And then additionally, just to let you know, I went to the, um, ribbon cutting for both the family orthodontics, which might have been about a month ago. And then just last week, I believe it was discerned. Um, so, and that's all I have.
Fantastic. Thanks for representing us with those.
DPW Building Committee is, uh, done, uh, complete. All money spent.
Tick list is done.
The what?
The tick list.
What's a tick list? Never heard of a tick list. I've been in construction my whole life. I've never heard that. Is the, is the, it, uh, it's done to the point of being done.
Okay.
Um, last night, had an E D C meeting, uh, met with, uh, Mass Development concerning, um, funding for projects in town, um, which was, which was a really good presentation. Uh, and, uh, one twenty-four Westboro, uh, one thirty Westboro Road is still in the M E P A process, two hundred thousand square foot buildings. Um, the M E P A process is gonna go for probably another six months. And, uh, but things are moving along.
Is that near Institute Road?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Um, any other reports? Uh, very good. Over to where? Venerable T A.
Yeah, uh, very short tonight. I was out for a good chunk of last week. Um, I would like to thank the Grafton Police Department. They put on a lunch for seniors, uh, down at the senior center. Unfortunately, not able to come here and see them all in their senior center bucket hats. That's really what I was looking for. Um, but, uh, I heard a lot of good feedback from, from our seniors, um, really good outreach. And, uh, just a really good event. So I'd like to thank them all, everyone that participated and the chief, um, for putting that on. Uh, I also, on Wednesday, presented to the Mass Assessing Association, uh, on the topic of First Amendment audits. So we did, uh, the chief and I put together a presentation about an hour and a half long. Um, and that seemed to be very well received as well. So.
Excellent. Have we had any, um, of those since last year?
Since the first one? No.
Okay.
Don't speak into existence. Um, nope, but we learned a lot from that one. And that was, I think, one of the reasons why they asked us to, to speak.
Alright, uh, does anybody have anything on correspondence?
Uh, a couple of things.
Sure.
Um, so last year, I, uh, responded to the students who had submitted questions to the select board correspondence. Um, I'm happy to do that again this year if, uh, unless somebody else is interested. We had, uh, a few in the, in the meeting packet.
Anyone? You, Larry?
Uh, and also I didn't know if we wanted to discuss plans for the memorial parade, uh, briefly, uh, if we're all planning on, uh, at last talk, we were all planning on walking together and, um, I don't know, everybody still down for that? Just meet up at the great upon time and?
Yeah, absolutely.
Except for me.
Uh, resignations.
We've been here long enough already.
Yeah, take your time, Manny.
Uh, I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Laura Deneen from the Accessibility Advisory Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Alright, uh, couple of comments. Do we have anybody online?
You have no hands.
Alright, anything from the peanut gallery?
Alright. Uh, we have some meeting minutes.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes for April twenty-sixth, May eight, and both sets of minutes from May two, twenty twenty-three as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All of us in favor? Uh, motion carries and I think that's it.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Second, all of us in favor?